Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, so thank you all for joining in. And today's session, today is twenty first of September, Thursday, today is a very auspicious day of Lalita Ashati. Right? And tomorrow is Sapthami and after tomorrow is Ashatmi, Radhaashatmi, the glorious appearance of Shrimati Radha Rani. So whenever the Lord appears, whenever Shrimati Radha Rani appears, all of her sakis appear before her, after her, around that time. We also see that Vishaka Devi's appearances also on Shrimati Radha Rani's appearance day. So in this way, whenever the Lord descends, the Lord is always accompanied by his associates. Whenever their lordships come, they always come with their associates, their paraphernalia, their devotees. So today is the most auspicious occasion of Sri Lalita Ashati and Lalita Devi is one of the principal, very, very intimate associate of Shrimati Radha Rani versus in the pastimes of Radha and Krishna. So we'll sing one bhajan at the end of the session. But quickly, let us start with the yoga dharma for this age of Kali, which is the chanting of the Hare Krishna Mahamanta, Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare with Sri Lopropad. Namum Vishnupadaya, Krishna preesthayabhutale, Shrimate Bhaktivedanta Swami Niti Namine. Namaste Saraswade Devay Gauravani Prachari Ne. Nirviseshashunyavadi, Paschatyade Shatarine.
Gadaadhar Shiva Shadi. Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Sri Krishna Chaitanla.
Hare Krishna, I hope you are able to hear.
Gadaadhar Shiva Shadi. Bhuhr, Hata Bhir. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram. Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare.[522.88]
Rupa Kadhamayam Dadaati Swapadantikam Vandeham Sri Guru Sri Utapakamalam Sri Gurunvaishnavam Sri Rupam Sagrajatam Sahagana Raguna Thanditam Tam Sajivam Sadvaitam Savadutam Parijana Sahitam Sri Krishna Chaitanya Devam Sri Radha Krishna Padan Sagana Lalita Sri Vishakaanvitaam Hare Krishna Karuna Sindhu Dina Bandhu Jagatpathe Gopesh Gopika Kanta Radha Kanta Namusudhe Taptakain Janagaurangiradhhe Vrindavanishwari Dushabhanusudhe Devi Pranamami Hari Priyae Mancha Kalpatarubyascha Krupa Sindhu Bheevacha Patithaanam Paavane Bhiyo Vaishnave Bhiyo Namuno Maha Jai Sri Krishna Chaitanya Prabhu Nityananda Sri Advaita Radha Shiva Sadhigora Bhaktabinda Hare Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna So today we are on the last chapter of this book Krishna Consciousness The Topmost Yoga System In this chapter we are talking about what is the real peace formula Prabhupada gives the peace formula in 5.29 We discussed it several times When you understand Krishna is a supreme controller Supreme enjoyer and supreme owner of everything Then we need not be in anxiety because When things go out of control, when we don't know what is happening, that is the time we get anxious So when we know that what is not within our control is within the control of Krishna Who is my supreme well vishar friend benefactor Who is well vishar of the entire world, then we need not be anxious We will just do our duty and then we will tell Krishna, we will accept everything Whatever Krishna gives as his mercy So that is what Prabhupada is explaining That this is the training that we are given To accept every situation as a mercy of Lord Sri Krishna And to accept every situation in this situation Oh Krishna, how can I serve you? If that is the attitude, we will not have any anxiety Alright, so let's quickly start reading. Okay, Shobha Mataji, go ahead. If by chance.
Hare Krishna Dandadpranam Mataji. Is me audio okay?
Yeah.
This training, Shilpa Prabhupada Ki Jaye, this training is given because someday or the other, the person may be Krishna conscious If by chance during this training, he meets a teacher who is saintly person and a pure devotee Of the Lord Then by such a contact, he becomes pure Therefore Lord Chaitanya said that the fortunate person who has had some spiritual assert in his past dealings will seek association of a pure devotee The seed of Krishna consciousness is received by the mercy of Guru, the spiritual master and by the mercy of Krishna Then the spiritual master and Lord Krishna will That a person must have Krishna consciousness, then the seed will nicely trophify That spiritual assert makes one fortunate and thus he becomes spiritually And will let Mataji some highlight.
Yeah, yeah, once again. Okay, yes, yes Mataji, go ahead.
And that And thus he becomes spiritually enlivened And then he meets a bona fide spiritual master and by the grace of spiritual master He can receive the seed of Krishna consciousness This is his inner urge Where can I get this association? Where can I get this awareness? This process is recommended, it is the general process of spiritual advancement Krishna is Within you and as soon as Krishna sees that you Are very sincere, that you are seeking, he sends a bona fide spiritual master This combination of Krishna and the spiritual master is the cause of one proceeding the seed of Krishna consciousness The seed is there, if you have a very nice seed aura Of a rose bush, what is your duty? You have a seed of any nice plant, it is your duty not to lock it up in the safety vault of a bank Your duty is to sow it in the ground, where Should you sow that seed? If you have information of Krishna consciousness, you just sow it in your heart, not in this earth, but then in but In that earth within yourself and after sowing a seed how And have you pour a little water on it so that water is hearing and chanting Once the seed is sown in the heart, just pour on a little water and it will grow This process should not be
Thank you Mataji.
Hare Krishna Dandadpranam Mataji Hari Bor.
Hari Bor Dandadpranam So Brahmande Brahmithe Konah Bhagya Maanachiba Guru Krishna Prasade Paya Bhaktilata Bijja Here Prabhupada is explaining how we get this Bhakti Unmukha Sukriti Right? When we assist in the past, when we assist in the Mission of Shilpa Prabhupada either by way of Anadhana Or by contributing towards the construction of the temple Or by you know sponsoring the deity clothes, we are getting all those You know the Gorapur Nima festival is coming up in March So we are getting opportunities to sponsor for dresses for the Mayapur deities Panchatatva Radamadavastashakis, right? To our capacity, whatever we contribute Towards these Iskhn temples For Anadhana, for the dresses, for the garland seva For the boat festival that is going to happen in most of the temples on Radhastami So like that, whenever we are able to contribute towards anything, then becomes Bhakti Sukriti When we get this Bhakti Sukriti, when we get the blessings of Guru The Gauranga and all the Vaishnavas and what happens? We will get more and more opportunities to do devotional service And that will make us ensure that we are on the right path If you are not able to chant Hare Krishna, we don't get the taste to chant Hare Krishna There is some service opportunity, but we want looking for reasons Why I cannot do that service, then we need to introspect Contemplate and check where did I go wrong? Why do I not have this taste? For reading Bhagavad Gita Bhagavatam or doing the seva Or you know going for the festival in the temple etcetera, right? We need to introspect because the seed is already sown in the heart by the mercy of Guru By the mercy of Shilpa Prabhupada Now it is our duty to grow that seed through the process of watering What is that process of watering? The process of watering Is by chanting Hare Krishna, by hearing Bhagavad Gita Bhagavatam Chaitanya Charita Amrita from those devotees Who have taste in hearing and chanting the holy names and then what happens? Our seed, they fructifies into a small creeper and then the small creeper goes bigger, 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 bigger It crosses the Mahatatwa You should understand that our Bhakti can never be an independent tree Oh, now I know everything, I will do everything on my own No, Bhakti is never a tree Bhakti is always, the seed grows into a nice creeper We are dependent on devotees association We are dependent on devotees mercy for our advancement and this way slowly grows up Crosses the Mahatatwa, reaches the lotus feet of Sri Sri Radha and Krishna And then initially there are the buds of bhava that come out And then you know which are the ecstasies, right? Ecstasies of tears coming down from the eyes, hair standing on end etcetera And then finally the fruit of Krishna prema bears and those fruits are offered at the lotus feet of Lord Krishna So this is the perfection of life This is the Krishna prema, which is the perfection of our human form of life That is what is explained here The seed is sown, which is Bhakti, it grows by the process of hearing and chanting And as it grows, you have to also, yeah It's only Japita Akaswamy Maharaj who also mentioning in a picture How when this Bhakti creeper The Bhaktilata Bijja grows, there are also weeds growing on the sides, what are these weeds? These weeds are Nishidaacha, Kutinati, right? What is it? You know talking, blaspheming the devotees, talking ill of the devotees You know having this, having this attitude of not doing seva Having this attitude of gossiping about devotees etcetera All those are weeds that are growing along with the Bhakti creeper, right? Bhaktilata Bijja is growing, the weeds are also growing in the sides You are nicely watering it, when you are watering it, the Bhaktilata also grows But the weeds are also growing and this hampers the growth of Bhakti, Bhaktilata So what are we going to do? We have to carefully pull out the weeds While ensuring that our Bhaktilata is not hampered How do we carefully pull out the weeds? By focusing on the offenses that we need to avoid while chanting Hare Krishna Mahamitra There are ten offenses, the first and the last are very, very important because The last offense is inattentive chanting which leads to the other ten offenses And the first mad elephant offense Where you are letting the elephant, okay, come and destroy my creeper Destroy my Bhaktilata That is when you, when you are engaging in Vaishnava prad, talking blaspheming the devotees Especially those who engaged in serving the mission of Shilpa Prabhupada Serving Lord Sri Krishna by preaching his message all over the world You are blaspheming them, talking ill about them, not respecting them adequately enough Then what happens? You are letting in an elephant, oh elephant come, I have a nice Bhaktilata Bijja I mean Bhaktilata, a nice Bhakti creeper, come and destroy it That's what we are inviting the mad elephant Because this is the mad elephant offense In spite, and if you said that even if you are honest chanting for millions of lifetimes But if it is committing a prad, then one will not, one will get all the other results Right? There are so many results of chanting Hare Krishna One will get name, fame, glory, one will get, you know, there's a lot of Siddhis, one will get What is that? Mystic powers, everything one will get But one will not get the desired success which is Krishna prema Because for Krishna prema, we have to continuously chant Hare Krishna Mahamitra And how do we chant Hare Krishna Mahamitra continuously? Stranadapi Shuni Chena Taro River Sahishnuna Amanina Manadena Kirthaniya Sada Hari We can do Kirthaniya Sada Hari only when we have humility like a blade of grass And tolerance like that of a tree, right? Only in those situations we will be able to chant You know Sada Hari, we will be able to do Kirthaniya Sada Hari Another way, right? Even if you are not able to develop these qualities, right? While we, while we try to develop these qualities with a sincere heart We continue to chant Hare Krishna whether or not we have taste And that also helps us, enables us to develop these qualities That's how we will attain Krishna prema So that is creeper that Prabhupada is talking about in this verse, right? And Prabhupada is saying that the tree, the Bhaktilata, the creeper will dry up If we don't do the watering process properly We know what is the watering process, hearing about Krishna, chanting Hare Krishna, that is the watering process Okay, we will request Shilpa Prabhu, go ahead.
Hare Krishna Dandadpranam Mataji.
Hare Krishna Dandadpranams, yes Prabhu.
Radha Shrimi God Blessings, Hare Krishna This process should not be stopped by the thought that because one is initiated That no need to hearing and chanting, it should go on continuously If you stop pouring water on the plant, it will dry up It will not produce any fruit Similarly, even if you are highly elevated in Krishna consciousness You cannot stop this process of hearing chanting because Maya is so strong, so powerful That as soon as he sees, ah ha, here is an opportunity, at once you will dry up By the process of pouring water, that plant of Krishna consciousness grows How does it grow? There is a limit to every plant you see, it grows and grows and grows and grows But there is a limit that it stops growing But the plant of Krishna consciousness grows in such a way That it does not rest in any part of the material universe Because Krishna conscious person is not satisfied with planetary facilities In any part of this material universe Even if you offer him Siddhaloga Where the inhabitants are so powerful and elevated That they can fly in the sky without airplanes, he will not be satisfied There is a planet Siddhaloga.
Okay, Hare Krishna Prabhu, we have two other devotees, maybe we can ask them to read So, thank you Prabhu, Hare Krishna Okay, so this is the last chapter, we finished this chapter today So here, there is no limit, right? Every plant we see that, you know, they have, all the trees have a long lifespan When creepers and all you see, you know, so many creepers dry up very easily Because there is no watering done or even when the water is You know poured, there is some, you know, this infection that has happened Or something like that, you know, there is bacteria, fungi etcetera The trees don't grow, sometimes we even see our tulsi Right? In our house also drying up, right? We leave, we go to some place, two, three days, we come back If you have not given it to our neighbor or not made arrangement for the water To be, you know, to be given to Tulsi Maharani, Tulsi Maharani also dries up Because it's a budding, it's a small creeper, isn't it? Similarly, our Bhakti is also like a small creeper If you don't take care of it, it will dry up And then all we have to do, we have to redo the entire process because We have, we have been inattentive It's like not caring for something, right? So when we don't water our Bhaktilata, Bhaktilata very nicely So that it grows nicely, then we are not caring for it That means we are being inattentive to it, isn't it? So we should not be doing that And also Prabhupada makes a very important point here A devotee is not satisfied by any material opulence, whatever planetary facilities is given Even through Maharaj, we saw that Krishna gave him the entire Dhruva Loka But he was saying, oh my god, I don't want this Dhruva Loka or anything I'm so, I was so foolish, I desired this, but I don't want all of this I only want to serve you Lord But the Lord said, okay, you will get service also, but since this was your desire To have a planet that is greater than your great grandfather So this Loka will be there and I will be there personally as your door keeper So this is the love of the supreme personality of Godhead Okay, so let's go ahead, Karpa Gavali Mataji, go ahead, there is a planet Siddhaloka
Thank you Mataji.
Hare Krishna.
There is a planet Siddhaloka, according to Srimath Bhagavatam Where the inhabitants do not need airplanes or spacecraft to fly from one planet to another Above Siddhaloka, there are many other planets I saw that the latest modern opinion is that every star is a sun And there are different planetary systems, solar systems But according to the Vedic literature, there are innumerable universes, it's just separate identities The limit of this universe is the autumn sky The modern scientists say Modern science says that each and every star is a sun But Vedic literature do not say that Vedic literature informs us, there is only one sun in each universe But there are innumerable universes and thus there are innumerable suns and moons The highest planet of this universe is called Brahmaloka And the Lord Krishna says, even if you approach the highest planet, you have to come back again Spутniks and astronauts are going very high and here on earth people are clapping But after just a brief time, they come down again, however, one may clap But he cannot do more than that Similarly, those who are materialistic can go high up to Brahmaloka where Brahma is But those who are Krishna conscious will reject even that They neglect even the impersonal Brahmajodhi, they don't care for it Can I continue Mataji?
Oh, sorry, I was on mute, thank you Mataji Okay, so Loka, unaravartinu Arjunah So a devotee is very intelligent, right? He will not settle for anything less than Krishna prema I don't want even Brahmaloka where the life seems to be eternal The life seems to be four hundred and eleven billion thirty million years, right? Very, very long, it almost looks like eternity But in that book, what book is that? Beyond Birth and Death, Shilpa Prabhupada explains in that book How this is same, although it seems to be eternal from our perspective From the perspective of Lord Sri Krishna, this is like a, this is like a Krishna This is insignificant time according to Lord Krishna's perspective, right? However, one may clap, he cannot do more than that, like that So one may, see clapping means what? How long can you keep clapping? Right? You may do so for half an hour, ten minutes, fifteen minutes etcetera But then you have to stop at some point in time Similarly, when you exhaust your pious credits, you may go to Brahmaloka, you may go to Indraloka, you may go to heavenly planets But when you exhaust your credits, what happens? You have to come back to this material world This is karma bhumi, where we perform our karma And then we go and exhaust our karmas in all the other planetary systems Only in earth we incur karma Then we go to the heavenly planets and exhaust our karma if you've got pious If you've got pious credits and if you've got, you know, performed sinful actions, then you go down to the various patala lokas etcetera To and to exhaust our, exhaust our sinful reactions And then we come back to the earthly planets, again we have a free will Do I want to go back to Krishna Loka or do I want to travel in this fourteen planetary systems? Ah Brahmalokanaloka, unaravartinu Arjunah And then Prabhupada ends this paragraph by saying, a devotee does not, it rejects, right? A devotee neglects even the impersonal Brahmajodhi They don't care for it, why? Because a devotee is very intelligent, right? What does he do? Yajanti, he is who made the saha Very intelligent people, they worship the supreme personality of Godhead Because that result which is Krishna prema, that only is eternal Even if you get, even if you get Brahman realization, you go and merge into the Brahmajodhi But you are not doing anything, you are in the platform of no lamentation, no hankering Right? Brahmbhuta Prasannatma Na Shochati Na Kamchati, wonderful, peaceful But we are not satisfied with peace, right? We are Anandamayobhyasad, we want to get happiness, we want to get bliss So that bliss, that happiness cannot be found in Brahman realization So a devotee even rejects Brahman realization So what do devotee actually want? Let's continue reading Who's the Sindhu Mataji, go ahead and then we will have Harini Mataji also read and then we will end, yeah, yes Mataji.
Hare Krishna.
Pranams.
Covering of this universe from there Mataji.
Yeah.
Hari Bor, Shilpa Prabhupada Ki Jaye The covering of this universe is far, far greater than the space which we The
Hari Bor.
Hare Krishna.
Mataji, your voice is breaking.
Okay.
Can you read?
The outside of the universe is okay now Is ten times the space within So one has to penetrate that covering, then reach Viraja, the casual ocean The Buddhist philosophical perfection is to reach that Viraja When this material existence is completely finished, it's called Viraja According to the Vedic language, but the Krishna conscious person Not only penetrates the covering of this universe But after he reaches that casual ocean, which is the neutral position, he continues The plant grows so nicely from Brahmalok to Viraja to the spiritual sky And even when that plant reaches the spiritual sky, it is not satisfied with any vaykunta planet The highest planet in the spiritual sky is Krishna Lok It is just like a lotus flower where Krishna is standing And there, when the plant finds Krishna's lotus feet, it rests Just as a creeper grows and grows and grows And at last attaches itself to something and then expands When the devotional plant gets to the lotus feet of Krishna, it expands As soon as this Krishna consciousness creeper captures Krishna's lotus feet, it takes shelter There, now I have finished my journey Let me expand here, to expand means to enjoy Krishna's association There the devotees are satisfied.
Hare Krishna, thank you Mataji.
Good job Mataji, Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna, so there, where do the devotees find satisfaction? The devotees find satisfaction at the lotus feet of Lord Sri Krishna Where they are ever ready, right? To do whatever service, right? It's also said, they also serve only stand and wait Like we have a batsman, the cricket team, there are always reserve, you know, in reserve if this person gets injured Then only this person is called Yet in the team credentials, in the team list, all these people are already figuring, right? They are all qualified as part of the team Similarly, we also, when we, when we get Krishna prema, we are there at the lotus feet of the Lord We are ever ready to perform service So we are part of that paraphernalia of the Lord We are part of Lalita and Vishaka's team to actually serve Lord Sri Krishna To serve Sri Sri Radha Krishna like that Alright, so Harini Mataji, we have the last part of it for you, please go ahead Mataji.
Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna Mataji Vat creeper has to go on and this was who are already in Krishna consciousness If they have their natural growth, relish the fruit of vat creeper even in this light If you continue this chanting and hearing process You will grow and grow and actually reach Krishna's lotus feet and there relish his association.
Hari Bor, so this is the goal of life, right? So if we continue this chanting and hearing process, our Bhaktilata will grow and grow and grow And reach Krishna's lotus feet and there relishes association So this is the goal, what is that? Yeah, so Prabhupada is actually dedicating this book to Gaur Mohan Day A pure devotee of Krishna who, okay, we'll ask, Harini Mataji, are you there? Okay, I'll read it A pure devotee of Krishna raised me as a Krishna conscious child from the beginning of my life In my childhood ages, he instructed me how to play the mridanga He gave me Radha Krishna Vikra to worship And he gave me Jagannath Ratha to duly observe the festival as my childhood played He was kind to me and I imbibed from him the ideas later on solidified by my spiritual master, the eternal father With this, we complete this most beautiful book What is this book? Krishna Consciousness, The Topmost Yoga System And what is the ultimate perfection of yoga? Ultimate perfection of yoga is to attain Krishna prema To reach the lotus feet of Lord Sri Krishna and be eternally available Use our free will to serve, satisfy and please Guru and Gauranga Sri Hari Nam Prabhu Ke Jai So hearty congratulations to all of you for having finished our next book of Shilpa Prabhupada So now tomorrow we will start the next book Or tomorrow we will have a class on Radhastami We will glorify Radhastami, I mean we will glorify the festival We will glorify Shrimati Radha Rani, we will sing nice, beautiful songs, we will sing Radhika Ashtrakam We will sing Radhika Kripa Katakshastotram And then we will, we will say, we will try to see that We will also read some sections from Bhaktipushavat Maharaj's book on Shrimati Radha Rani, like that we will do tomorrow So tomorrow we will meet at the same time, so let us see who are all there in today's session We have Sarvagupeshni Mataji, Shobha Mataji, Shridar Prabhu Karpa Gavali Mataji, Sindhu Mataji, Ramya Mataji Pallavi Mataji, Sumathi Suresh Mataji, Nagavani Mataji, Upamayeshwari Mataji, Niveda Mataji Ranganathan Prabhu, Harini Mataji Moishmi Mataji, Angjana Mataji, Sudha Mataji And then Subra Mataji, Purna Mataji, Vanmali Prabhu and Hemma Sujan Mataji, Hari Bor, thank you very much. Mancha Kalpatarubyascha Krupa Sindhu Bheevacha Patithaanam Paavane Bhiyo Vaishnave Bhiyo Namuno Maha Antagode Vaishnava Vrindaki Jai Jagat Guru Shilpa Prabhupada Ki Jai So I'll put a poll in the group, tomorrow you want to start a new book or tomorrow we will dedicate To Shrimati Radha Rani and then we will start a new book on Monday So whichever ways you all want, or you can take a poll here after the Kirtan. Namah Vishnu Padhaya Krishna Pishthaya Bhulthale Srimadev Bhaktile Nanta Swami Dina Namaste Sarshadeve Gauravani Charine Niri Te Chal Sunavari Ashatya Bichadari Jaya Shri Vidhara Chaili Anuna Prabhu Nityananda Iyatai Dharasri Vatsa Gauravakavinda Hare Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare Hare Go Vinda Jai Jai Gopala Jaya Jaya O Radha Ramana Hari Go Vinda Jai 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 Gaurani Jai Jai Gaurani Jai Gaurani Jai Jai Gaurani Jai Jai O Radha Madha Radha Madha Radha Madha Radha Madha Jai O Radha Shama Sundar Radha Shama Sundar Radhe Radhe Jai O Radha Rasa Dihari Radha Rasa Dihari Radhe Radhe Jai Jagannath Jai Jagannath Jai Baladeva Jaya Subhadha Jagannatha Swami Na Yanapata Gami Na Yanapata Gami Rava Dhum Jaya Balagupal Jaya Balagupal Balagupal Jaya Balagupal Jaya Jaya Prabhu Pal Jaya Prabhu Pal Jaya Prabhu Pal Jaya Shila Prabhu Pal Jaya Jaya Guru Dev Jaya Jaya Guru Dev Jaya Guru Dev Jaya Uya Guru Dev Hari Bor Hari Bor Hari Bor Hari Bor Srisiradha Krishna Chandrabhagavan Ki Jaye Sri Lalita Devi Apuransayam Mahamohudshaba Ki Jaye Jagat Guru Shilpa Prabhupada Shilpa Gurdev Ki Jaye Ntai Gaur Praymanande Hari Hari Bor Jai Jai Sri Radhe Hare Krishna, so everyone can remember themselves now New book from Monday Mataji, tomorrow Radha Rani's glorification Okay, alright, so everyone can remember themselves now, we quickly take a poll So what do we do tomorrow? Tomorrow should we start a new book or should we start You know glorification, everyone can remember themselves now, right? Can you all?
Glorification, glorification.
Okay, so tomorrow we will do glorification of Shrimati Radha Rani, we will sing Bhajan, glorifying Radha Rani And then Sunday is our service day at the temple Where we are, we can do all kinds of services and Monday we will start a new, is that okay?
Yes Mataji.
Okay, Hare Krishna, Shilpa Prabhupada Ki Jaye Shilpa Gurdev Ki Jaye Antagode Vaishnava Vrindaki Jai Ntai Gaur Praymanande Hari Hari Bor
Hari Bor.
Thank you, Dandadpranams I will share Lalita Ashtrakam on the groups, alright? Hari Bor, Dandadpranams Shilpa Prabhupada Ki Radha Kripa Kataksh Yeah, 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 Radhika Kripa Kataksh also I will share And then tomorrow we will sing those songs, alright?